Followed, my part's gonna be followed by Ms. Mickens with PTA. I don't know if she's in here yet, but she, I'm sure will be. Later, so she's gonna share some, some great information about PTA. Cause I see many, many names in front of me of some parents I know who we have, I've already spoken with about being in PTA or are interested in supporting that. So that should be good. So, let me go ahead and jump into the presentation. If I can, here we go. All right. All right, so just um, a few reminders. Please remember to mute when I'm asking a question and feel free to utilize the chat function. If you do have a question, you want to record it, please do so. So, uh, the, the first thing we'll be talking about, really my part today is to talk about the phase in a reopening plan for Fulton County. I know that um, all of you have probably received messages from me and others about completing a survey to identify your choice for these phases. So, uh, the deadline for that survey is tomorrow. So I want to make sure that I at least had a chance to, to share some information about each phase with everyone uh, who is here. So, here you have the reopening matrix. This is a revised matrix. So this is the district's reopening matrix or, or plan. And they, um, we're in phase one right now and that will, uh, finish tomorrow. And phase one has been, uh, small groups of students in K, in pre-K through second grade back into the building for 90-minute segments of time. It's been really minimal in terms of number of students in the building. And so, that's gone pretty well. We finished that tomorrow with our Friday students. Uh, and then we move over phase two and into phase three. So phase three, which I'll talk about in more detail. And then phase four and then face to face. So I have a, a little bit about each of those. Before I go there, I did want to reiterate the parent election survey. You should have received an email or a dojo message with this survey link to complete for your, um, to complete for your child to show your decision for these phases. So please make sure you are looking out for that. If you did not receive it and you want me to send you one directly, please just leave your name in the chat, uh, and I'll make sure you get one. Name and email, please. You can also email me or reach out to me. Alright, so phase three overview. So I know the text is pretty small here, but I'm gonna just kinda give you a, an overview. Phase three begins on Monday. And so it is optional. So every phase is optional, just so you know. For the whole first semester and possibly beyond, but we know for the first semester, parents are gonna have the option of doing virtual, uh, learning for their child. So there is a pandemic still going on and, um, and so parents definitely will have the virtual option through December. Uh, I can't tell you what it's gonna look like second semester yet, but that is the decision through the first semester is there'll be an option. So every one of these phases is gonna begin with, uh, it being optional. So phase three is optional. It begins on Monday, September 21st. This is very important for everybody. The school hours are gonna go back to normal and that goes for not just students in phase three, but also students remote. So I'll explain a little more about that later, but just so you know, the schedule you're following right now, the URL schedule, we're gonna be shifting it. It's not gonna be more time, but we're gonna be spacing the time out differently. So students who are here with us face to face can be working on the same things as those who are remote. So school hours will be 7:40 to 2:20 PM. Pre-K through fifth grade students will have the option in phase three to attend one full day of school based off their last name. So you can see, uh, how that works out. Monday, last names or household names, sometimes they're different, but last names or household names from A to E get to come on Mondays. F through K's come on Tuesdays. We do not have students coming in on Wednesdays. Wednesdays are asynchronous days and I'll tell you about that in a minute. Thursdays, that would be group three and that's L through P. And then Fridays are Q through Z. So that is a district way of scheduling students for these phases. So they did, they made the decisions around the last names and the alphabetical, uh, order used to schedule the students. So again, in phase three begins on Monday, uh, coming up Monday, students will be able to come one day based off their last name. Masks will be required by all students, all staff, everybody who's in the building will have to wear a mask while they're here. So it's an important consideration for parents who are considering, uh, sending their children back to school to know that masks are gonna be, going to be required and students who do not wear a mask will not be able to stay in the building. So it's just really important to know that. Meals, breakfast and lunch will, will be provided. Temperature checks will be random unless we have low enough numbers to do individual checks for every student. But if, if there are too many students, we'll do random checking. Transportation will be provided by buses. Wednesdays, as I mentioned, will be asynchronous. That means there will not be live instruction on Wednesday. The teacher will check in with the students in the morning and then give them some activities to work on. So it's kind of a day away, a little bit away from the computer for students where they can do some work, but they're not looking at a screen the entire day. And it's a day for our staff to engage in professional learning as well and to support students in a different manner. And, uh, and then students who do go into phase three must bring supplies with them that are gonna be their own personal supplies. This includes a water bottle and headphones. Our water fountains are not accessible for students to drink from. They'll be able to use them to fill up water bottles, but not drink from directly. And, uh, we want students to bring their own headphones. We are, uh, looking at purchasing headphones for every student, but uh, if a student has headphones they prefer to wear, we encourage them to bring them with them because they will be getting on some technology while they're in the building. So that is phase three. If you have any, and any questions you have, just jot them down for yourself and put them in the chat and I'll come back to them. Phase four, so phase three lasts, um, from September 21st through October, I wanna say fifth, but I'm not entirely certain here. October 2nd. So, um, there's two weeks on phase three. So phase three goes on for two weeks. So if you have a child whose last name is Adams and you decide to send them back for phase three, your child would get to come on Monday of the first week of phase three and then again on the next Monday and then they'd be done for phase three. So just kind of, it's, it's strange. It's a new way of doing this, but that's how that scheduling works. So there's two weeks of phase three and then we move into phase four. And this is all if data allows us to. So this is all pending, uh, COVID-19 data and if things continue moving in the correct direction. So phase four, um, will begin on October 5th. So the hours do not change for phase four. It's still 7:40 to 2:20 PM. Phase four is still optional, so it is not required of anyone. It is optional. Pre-K through fifth grade students will now have an option to attend two full days in phase four. So Monday and Thursday, groups one and three will go there. Those are students with a last name between A and E and L and P. So those students will be grouped together. So we, we increased in the number of students together in phase four, just so you're aware, parents. Each phase increases the number of students who are going to be together. Tuesday and Friday, you have groups two and four are gonna come in together. So every Tuesday, every Friday, those two groups come together. Those are F through K's and Q through Z's. So masks will continue to be required. Meals will continue to be provided. Temperature checks will continue to be random. Transportation will continue to be provided. Wednesdays will continue to be asynchronous and students should again bring their own supplies, including water bottles and headphones. So that is phase four. So phase four lasts from October 5th through, I do believe, October 12th, 13th. So it's about eight days for phase four. Phase four is not very long. It's, it's, it's quite short, actually. And then we move into the final phase, which is full face to face. So, um, full face to face again is optional. So there's no requirement on anybody choosing this. If you do not choose this, you remain in universal remote learning and we, uh, continue to provide instruction that way. It begins on October 14th. The school hours are the same, um, as they have been for the previous phases. Pre-K through fifth grade students will now return to a regular five-day schedule. So they will no longer come based off last name. They will come every day. And so that will increase that, uh, the number of students in the classroom, uh, once again, when they come back every day. Masks will continue to be required. Meals will continue to be provided. Temperature checks will continue to be random. Transportation will continue to be provided and students must continue to bring supplies, including water bottles and headphones. So that is the movement and that's the transition. So when I show you this, that's a breakdown of those three, phases three, four and five, well, I would, I'd say five, three, four and face to face. And you can see the target dates are in here and, um, and how that works out. So, um, just some important reminders. Please complete your election survey by Friday, September 18th. If you have not done so already, please make sure you do that. Also make sure you're just letting the teacher know, your child's teacher know what your decision is as well. They'll be planning for it as well. Instructional schedules will change for all students beginning Monday. So just so you know, again, that, that's gonna happen for all students. Teachers will share out that schedule tomorrow, the revised schedule with, uh, links will still be the same, but they'll make sure you have those links as well. And so you can, and it's gonna take a little while to get used to, but we do believe it's gonna be the only schedule change we make this year, excuse me. So, um, we are having to make that one shift to make this work for our amazing teachers who are, um, who are, who are learning and trying to figure out the best way to teach students who are at home and students who are with them, which is very challenging and they deserve a ton of kudos and credit for, for trying this out. If students are coming back for phase three, please remember three really important things. We need to know how they're coming here and how they're going home and so do you. We need them to be coming with a mask on. We do not, we have some masks here, but we can't afford to give one away every time a student does not come with a mask on. So they need to wear a mask if they're gonna come back. And please, please, please continue checking their wellness. They needed wellness checks regularly, um, asking them how they're feeling and, and making sure that they're not coming in if they're not feeling well. It's really critical. So those are for students that they are coming back for phase three. Remote learning resources. So, um, we'll continue providing resources for remote learning. We're not gonna stop. We, we really believe that, um, some great work has gone into remote learning. We believe there's been a great partnership with our parents and with remote learning. So we're gonna continue providing resources and great instruction for remote learning to take place. Tech support would be, continue to be provided. We're hoping to be able to provide more tech support from the school rather than having to send parents to Banneker High School and other places to have support for them, uh, their devices. So we hope to be able to fix some of those internally. Meals, uh, a really important update about meals, beginning on Wednesday, uh, and I'll send out communication about this, but beginning Wednesday of next week, you will be able to pick up your meal at Bethune. So those of you who have been going to McNair or other places for your meal pickup, you will be able to come to Bethune, um, or other places to pick up meals, uh, prepackaged meals on Wednesdays from 11 to 1, starting this Wednesday coming up. So we are excited about that, um, and having, and being able to offer that to our families. So that's Wednesday from 11 to 1. You could actually preorder them. I'll, I'll be sending out a link that'll allow you to preorder what you want, but you can also come without preordering. It's all, it's all drive-through. It's all, um, you know, contact, uh, free and we do a good job with that. Social emotional support, we're continuing to always provide lessons and resources around social emotions, social emotional support. It is a, it is a time in, uh, not just, not just because of COVID, but just in a number of, of ways where social emotional, um, uh, you know, the feelings that we have and, and some of the things we're experiencing are contributing to a lot of, of other things. So we definitely want to be working with you, partnering with you on supporting, uh, your, your children with their social emotional, um, skills and making sure they feel comfortable and, um, you know, as, as we deal with a lot of different things. And family assistance is always out there. So if you ever need assistance, you can definitely reach out to me. I will put you in contact with our social work department and we'll try to assist in any way we can. So, a couple more reminders before I see if there are any questions and then pass this over to Ms. Mickens. Infinite Campus, we are slowly climbing the ladder in parent enrollment in Infinite Campus. We're about at 40% right now. That still means that 60% of our parents don't have access to grades, don't have access to their own child, children's data and scores and report cards and things like that. So if you do not currently have access to Infinite Campus and you are on the call right now and you really want that access, please let me know. I'll make sure we get you your activation key. We work with you to get figured out how to get in there. It's not the easiest process and I wish it were easier, but I do believe that, um, we will reach a, a much larger percentage over, uh, the course of the next month as we continue working with families on that. So please reach out if you, if you, if you do not have access because again, we're not sending home paper report cards anymore. We're not sending home things the way we used to. It's all done online and so you gotta have access to see it. With that being said, Class Dojo, please make sure you are signed up and are consistently engaged in Class Dojo. I know that I've been using it regularly, so you guys probably are tired of seeing my posts, but, um, I, I feel like it's a really effective way to communicate with you all. So, um, please make sure you are signed up. And if you are not, again, reach out to me and I'll put you in contact with your teacher so you can get that done. If you can follow us on Twitter at, uh, @BethuneES and Instagram at @Bethune underscore elementary. Please follow us and see some great things that are happening within the school, um, even as we're doing, uh, virtual instruction. And before I pass it off, coming soon, or before I get some questions coming soon, we have Curriculum Night, uh, in two weeks. So Curriculum Night in two weeks, we're not entirely certain the timeframe for that because we, we wanna have some innovative ideas around that. We have a PTA meeting coming in October as well, um, and we'll define that date soon. And then we have our next town hall meeting in October, October 15th. So just be aware, um, town hall meetings are gonna be monthly moving forwards. The next one will be October 15th. And I am open for some Q and A. I got eight minutes before I pass this over, cause I told Ms. Mickens, 6:30, I was passing the baton. So, let me come out of this for just a moment and see if there's anything in the chat box I may have missed. Okay. Think there are any, any chat pieces? Uniforms? Oh, um, Harlem's Mom. Uniforms are not requi-, well, we always encourage uniforms. We are not going to let that be a reason a student is going to have a bad day at Bethune, but, um, you know, we encourage them. We will continue encouraging them, uh, especially as more students come back. But they are not, they are not mandatory. Alright, so questions about the phases? Anybody have a question for me about the phases before we go over to the PTA side? If you do, feel free to unmute and let me know.
Mr. Pratt?
Yes?
If we choose to do virtual now, do we have the option to go face to face maybe like in January?
Uh, yes.
For the whole year or just for a short time?
Yeah, this is just your selection for the first semester. So you're really selecting for your, for your first semester. And then when they, when, we, we, when we know more about the second semester, I'm sure there'll be another opportunity to select.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Great question. Anyone else with a question? Ms. Mickens, are you here?
Yes, I am.
Awesome. Okay, well, I think we might be out of questions. One second. Alright, so I'm gonna pull up the PTA PowerPoint so nobody has to, we don't keep anybody too long and, uh, and you can take it away. So let me go and get that PowerPoint pulled up.
Okay.
Alright, and it's in the beginning. Alright, feel free, I'll, I'll move the slides whatever you tell me to.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pratt. Good evening, everyone. My name is Dionne Mickens and I am currently serving my two-year term as the Secretary of the South Fulton Council PTA and I am also the team leader for five South Fulton schools, which includes Bethune Elementary. So I am looking forward to working with the incoming board. Slide two. I want to speak on the value of PTA and what it means to PTA for your child. Slide three. Why are we here today? We are here to support PTA's mission and add us to make every child's potential a reality by engaging and empowering families and communities to advocate for our children. We are also committed to values of collaboration, commitment, diversity, respect and accountability. Now and more than ever during these times, it is more critical and important that PTA is successful and successfully positioned to support all children today.
One second, Miss, I'm gonna make sure that we are muted. I, I hear some, somewhere. Alright, I think we're good. Okay.
Okay, thank you. What are the PTA relationships? One of the relationships of P, excuse me, relationships of PTA is our parents and teachers. When both parents and teachers work together to achieve the PTA purpose, this allows family engagement to be enhanced and build a strong relationship between the two. Parental support enables teachers who possess the knowledge and leadership to optimize their important work of educating our children and our youth. This in turn also helps PTA to serve our children well. PTA also has a relationship with students on the PTSA level, mainly at middle school and high school. Our children who are part of PTSA want to be a part of the association and serve on committees to help fight for causes that they support and issues that affect their lives. Another important PTA relationship is the principal of the school and it is very important to develop a strong professional and work in relationship with them. Communication between the principal and PTA is key in achieving PTA goals and understanding the particular needs of the school. Also, both PTA and the principal working together will create an environment that welcomes parents and also helps to build a strong homeschool connection. The PTA works to build a strong relationship with the community as well, as every member of the community is a vital stakeholder in shared decision-making with educators, parents and students. When we think of the bigger picture and the wellness we want within our community as a strong education system, it brings vitality and businesses to the community. And likewise, growing businesses bring revenue and expertise to the school system. This in turn can form business partners and also allow community establishments to open their door to PTA as a meeting space and/or event space. Next slide. National PTA is now moving away from PTA being known as a noun, being known as a thing or a social club. We want to shift from saying PTA is an extra to saying PTA is essential by showing how PTA helps your child succeed. Under national PTA standards, PTA is now a verb in action. And the action of PTA is to support your child's potential in one or more multiple ways. To invest in your child's potential, to volunteer for your child's potential and to advocate for your child's potential. Next slide, thank you. PTA offers all parents and caregivers the opportunity to be engaged in their child's potential. Being a member of PTA means that you are part of a powerful association, action plan that is forced on programs and initiatives that strengthen your child's education in the family-school partnership. However you PTA, it's all an investment to your child. PTA to support your child's teacher and curriculum. PTA to advocate on the issues impacting your child and effect, in effect, excuse me, change at local school, local, state and national levels. And also PTA to build a stronger, more diverse, inclusive school community. Individuals also often ask me, how do they PTA? And there is no wrong way to PTA. And we invite every family to participate because we can do more together than we can apart. Next slide, please. Another question that I hear is, what does my PTA membership go towards and what does it do for PTA? PTA membership induce support your child by funding essential educational and curriculum needs, advocating on behalf of children and educators at the local, state and national levels and also building an inclusive school community for all families. And this goes for money that's raised for fundraisers as well. The funds raised support educational needs, advocating needs and community needs. So I invite you to join PTA for your child because increasing our membership even by one makes it possible to provide important educational resources, speak on important issues and create a strong school community. Again, there is no wrong or right way to be involved. Anything you can give, whether it's time or money, will support your child's potential. And reverting back to the three main factors of PTA and what we focus on, education. How does PTA support students, teachers and curriculum needs? Advocacy. How does PTA advocate on behalf of children at your school at the local, state and national levels? And community. How is a PTA welcoming, inclusive community committed to strengthening the connection of all families? Education, support critical academic needs. PTA to fund essential school resources and curriculum needs, including investments in technology, the arts and science programming. Regarding education, that could be a STEM night or supporting the arts program and that PTA, and, excuse me, the art program that PTA has done for over 30 years, which is Reflections. And that recognizes the talents of our children in South, in South Fulton in our categories. Advocacy, give a voice to important issues. PTA to be an active voice at the local, state and national levels and to impact decisions affecting your child's health, safety and quality of education. A recent example was one that we had at the D10 meetings. We voted on a law created by the Director John Martin and the first director, excuse me, the first Assistant Director Tara Surratt to mandate the mask policy in Fulton County under PTA and the law has been passed. Last year at the PTA Day at the Capitol in February, House Bill 9 number, excuse me, number 939 was created to decrease the scholarship funding from, from 100 million to 58 million, with the difference going to private schools. PTA opposes diverting, excuse me, diverting public funds to private funds for any reason. So this bill was defeated. Why? Because we came out in numbers. We used our voice in our votes to advocate for our children in our public schools. Community, build a stronger, more inclusive school. PTA to strengthen connections between your family, your child's classmates, their families and teachers to build a thriving and inclusive community for everyone. A lot of people think that PTA is a social club, but again, under the new meaning of PTA, we now want you to think of PTA as a community because this is what a lot of social activities in the community do, which is build community among families as well as teacher and administrators. Our next two slides are regarding the local leader positions for PTA and a short description of each job duty. We have our president, the presiding officer and official representative of the PTA and they are responsible for leading the PTA to serve its mission and implement its vision. We have our first vice president and second vice president, if your bylaws allow for two. And one could be a planning development, which is planning organized programs and services for a school community. And the other one could be a parent involvement. Planning, organize events and activities for parent, family and engagement. And both the vice presidents will act for the president in their absence and perform such duties as the president may direct. We have the PTA treasurer and they are the authorized custodian of all funds of the PTA and they keep the financial records and preparing reports to comply with PTA policies. Again, if your bylaws state, you may have two secretaries, a recording and a corresponding. With the recording secretary being responsible for keeping an accurate, concise, permanent record of proceedings at all PTA Board and General Meetings. And your corresponding secretary responsible for maintaining all communication of the PTA through best avenues. and your Correspondent Secretary responsible for maintaining all communication of the PTA through best avenues, whether it be news, email, newsletters, emails, website, or social media. So how can you become a valued member of Bethune Elementary PTA? Member Hub, which is a Georgia PTA centralized location. It has been designed to help local leaders effectively run their PTA. Future Bethune Elementary School PTA members may join the local unit PTA via Member Hub and pay membership dues and/or donations. Bethune Elementary PTA can collect payments for fundraisers, festivals, spirit wear, and teacher appreciation donations. Your state and national dues can be paid on Member Hub by the PTA President and Treasurer. Local unit leaders can send updates to PTA members for Bethune Elementary. Again, there is no wrong way to PTA. So thank you for taking the time out of your evening to let me speak to you regarding PTA and how PTA can be a part of Bethune Elementary.
Alright, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Um, I just wanna reiterate to everyone, uh, I think that if you are joining us tonight, then you are who we're talking to because you have a vested interest in making, uh, you know, education better for your child, but probably also better for any child who walks into Bethune. Um, so many of you have already filled out a form that said you're interested in being in the PTA, which is fantastic. We're gonna do a PTA meeting, um, very soon, but I'm gonna be sending out a survey with the officer positions for anyone who is interested. We've had some terrific officers, uh, over the past couple of years. I don't know if they're in the call right now, but, um, you have probably met them, uh, and, and Charlene has been our president, uh, Ms. Demmerville for the, the past two years. And so we're really trying to increase our capacity and increase our outreach with PTA. Um, I think that we have the opportunity, even in the midst of this pandemic, to, we, we're already partnering at a different level between school and home. So to build on that, I think would be really, really, uh, a, a great opportunity for us. And so I'll be sending out that, uh, survey for anyone who wants to volunteer for an officer position. Um, but we will also have a PTA meeting, uh, in October to go through that in more formal ways. Um, but please, 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 if you are interested, I promise we'll make it, we'll make it a great time together. Um, I, I look forward to bringing on more people and, you know, trying to figure out how we continue to increase the enrollment into PTA. And how do we make school more of a, um, you know, more attractive for families who, who may not choose to attend this meeting or may not choose to, uh, engage the same way. Um, I, I know for a fact they care a lot about their child, so I don't question that. So I just, you know, I think that sometimes partnering with our parents, we can figure out ways to increase that outreach and increase the enrollment for PTA. And ultimately, when we do that, we make a huge difference for the children. Um, because we can provide things, PTA can provide things that I can't provide, uh, with my budget and, and the restrictions I have. Um, so I encourage all of you to, uh, fill out the form. The form's going to be, uh, it's gonna list if you wanna be an officer, but also if you just wanna be a member. So just go ahead and fill that out again. If you've already done it, great, but this one's gonna be a little bit more detailed uh, in terms of contact information and things like that. Um, but that's going out, uh, this weekend on Sunday, uh, so be on the lookout for that. Uh, but I do thank you all for being part of this and making this, again, taking time out of your night to do this. There's a lot of things going on right now. It's six thirty. There's plenty of things happening. There's a board meeting happening right now that I need to start tuning into, um, but thank you. And I really mean that. Um, I am available for questions if you have someone. Um, or have some questions. Mister Smith, um, that's a great question. I, um, I don't think you need to live in the area to help, but we, because we meet virtually now. So, um, let me ask, i- is Ms. Mickens still here?
Yes, I am.
Is there any restrictions on PTA, uh, participation based off of where you live?
Then there's not.
Okay. So Mister Smith, just be, fill out that form too. I'll make sure it goes out, uh, through Dojo, uh, and through email. And, um, and, and we'll be able to have you join us for these virtual sessions. Everything will be virtual, so we're gonna try to make this work as best we can for anybody, so they can be eating dinner while they're joining the PTA meeting. We'll do.
Mister Pratt, I wanna, um, say something really quick because I really appreciate the work ethic that, um, and the professionalism with the communication that you have with your parents and your staff. So once you get your PTA up and running, I will be making a donation to Bethune Elementary.
Oh, wow. Thank you so much. That means a ton. We are honored to have your donation. Thank you. So yeah, let's, um, let's make this happen, everyone. So be on the lookout this Sunday for that form. Uh, if you have any questions, let me know. If you know of anyone who you think has a child here and would be a great member, please bring him with you into this virtual meeting. It's the easiest way to join us, and, um, again, you can do it from the comfort of your home. Um, so I hope we can, we can really increase this. Alright, I got your email, Mister Smith. I'll make sure that we get that to you. Um, and we should have that email in our system already, but I will double check on that. Um.
Thank you, sir.
You are well welcome, definitely. Um, Mister Smith, real quick, do you get any emails? If I, like, for today, I sent out a reminder about this meeting. Did you get that?
Yes, I did.
Okay, perfect, perfect.
I have my email.
Excellent. Um, anyone else with any questions? I got about four more minutes. Alright, you all, well, you are, you are amazing. You're gonna help us take Bethune over the top, so we'll do it together. So thank you all. Um, I'll stay on for a few minutes if anybody has anything, but if not, feel free to jump off and enjoy your evening. And, uh, the next time we'll meet will be for Curriculum Night in two weeks. So be on the lookout for that communication too. It should be a fun event, all virtual, of course.
Mister Pratt.
Yes.
Hey, it's Harlem's mom.
Hey.
I actually helped with parent, um, with the parent portal with Infinite Campus.
Got you. Can I, um, if I put my email in the chat box, will you shoot me a quick email so I can give you a call tomorrow?
Absolutely.
Okay. You can also text me if it's easy. I'm gonna put, I'll put that in there too.
Okay.
Everyone, my email and number is in the chat box if you need it. Um, feel free to reach out to me. But leave me a text on the phone if you tried and you don't get through, just because I sometimes, uh, it's, it's somewhere else, not next to me. So, um, a text, I'll, I'll, once sure I get to you. Um. I select the remote line, but just in case if I go to work and I have my son two-faced to make the same time, I will be at work. I think that's Rashawn's mom. Am I correct? So I'll, I'll respond to that, and then if you have anything else, you can always reach out to me. Um, when you make your option, you're really making it for, uh, i- it can't be flexible like that. It just needs to be kind of one way or the other. Um, that's, I know it can be challenging, but, um, that's, that's the situation we're in. So you're gonna, well, you'll stay remote, um, and then you can always reach out to me if something changes with your schedule or, or anything like that. Um, and we can talk through it individually, so I hope that somewhat answers your question, but, but contact me individually and we'll, we'll talk through it. You're welcome. Okay, everyone, um, I'm gonna close this down. Uh, have a great evening.
Mister Pratt.
Yes.
I think it may have been another meeting. I see several parents in another meeting asking, where is everyone? I just told them that they were in the wrong meeting. So I don't know how that happened, but there are several parents in another meeting called Virtual Town Hall. It may be from, from the one the other week.
Uh, it probably is. Um, they probably just went to an older, an older flyer. See, this is why I wish town, I wish teams would just shut, not allow that to happen. So let me, did you see them in there? Do they, are they still there?
They started me, let me go back to it.
I'll pop in there and, and, and tell them that I'll share this recording with them.
Sixteen minutes. Yo, several parents. I think they're leaving after I just put, this is the wrong meeting. I see that now they have ended it, but it was, yeah, several parents in, in their meeting.
Oh, geez. Uh, I don't know how to stop that from happening though. How do you not have that happen?
I think when you, when you hang up the call, just make sure you hit the end meeting and not just leave, and they won't be able to go back in it.
Okay, got you. Okay. Alright, alright, everyone, well, I'm gonna hit end meeting, so no one can join this one again. But thank you all for being here, and, uh, I'll share the recording in, on Sunday's, uh, message as well. Take care. Bye-bye.